To the March tenth, two thousand and fifteen regular meeting of the Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission. The roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Workman Associates. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward and recognize and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission and not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, BlackBerries, PDAs, or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting, please either be placed in silent mode or be turned off. Mr. Appahidian?
Here.
Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Krant?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Senzika?
Here.
Mr. Strat?
Here.
Mr. Teagle? We have a quorum present, and the next item is the approval of the agenda. Could I have a ownership approve of the agenda?
Someone.
Seconded by Mr. Hudson. Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krant, yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Senzika?
Yes.
Mr. Strat?
Yes.
Mr. Appahidian?
Yes.
Number three is the minutes from the February twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen minutes. Moved by Mr. Strat, seconded by Ms. Cruz. Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krant, yes. Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Senzika?
Yes.
Mr. Strat?
Yes.
Mr. Appahidian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Item four is public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audit who wants to speak to the commission about items not on the agenda? Single one, we'll move on to agenda item five, which is the preliminary site plan review. Proposed Pinery Woods Site Condominium, twenty-six units or lots, north side of Waddles between Greensboro and Forsite, section thirteen, currently zoned R1C, one-family residential district. Mr. Carlisle, we'll present the report, and I will participate as is required.
Thank you. Good evening, good planning commission. The applicant is proposing a twenty-six-unit, single-family detached site condominium project, and as the chairman had noted, the site is located on the north side of Waddles between John R. and Dequender. The proposed development is a conventional layout with a single access point off Waddles that forks or splits into two separate roads that run north-south. Those two roads terminus at the northern property line to allow for future development if it should so occur to the north. We do note that the site has some significant natural features already existing on the site, and that's probably an assumption as to why the site hasn't been developed previously. The tree survey indicated by the applicant indicates approximately four hundred and sixty-two tagged trees. These species include box elder, maple, elm, and hawthorn. Most of those trees measure between five and ten inches in DBH and are in good condition. Of those four hundred and sixty-two trees, the applicant has indicated they plan on removing five, uh, four hundred and fifty-four of those trees. So we recommend or encourage the applicant to selectively clear trees as needed rather than doing mass grading or redesign the lot layout to better preserve the existing valuable trees on the site. The site also has a significant amount of water features in addition. This includes its location within the five-hundred-year floodplain. It also has the Beaver Creek drain that runs through the property as well. In addition, there is a approximately two-point-eight-acre unregulated wetland along the northern area of the site as shown above. We do note that the applicant is proposing a rather conventional rectangle stormwater detention pond that really is not an amenity to the development. That's located along Waddles, and they're not utilizing the existing natural drainage pattern of the site, nor are they utilizing, as far as we can tell, any best management practices in terms of stormwater management. So we do also, in addition to tree preservation, encourage the applicant to use a more naturalized stormwater management system that utilizes the site's existing water features, as well as incorporates the use of best major practices, including natural landscaping and low-impact development principles. So in summary, we recommend that the applicant explore opportunities to better preserve existing onsite natural resources. This includes more selective tree clearance rather than a mass grading as proposed, as well as better use and configuration of stormwater management practices with the use of best major practices as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask you one question, Mr. Carlisle?
Sure.
What are the options for a developer? What is the advantage of a cluster option for the developer? Is it a bonus?
There is opportunity for density bonus. They can get up to, I think it's a twenty percent density bonus, provided that they meet certain open space requirements. There's also, and the developer might have different numbers than I would have or a different opinion on this, potential for increased value if you do preserve onsite resources. And if you simply clear cut and destroy them, you might get a higher resale or higher value on your homes.
Thank you. Any other questions for the consultant?
I do.
Mr. Hunt?
Mr. Carlisle, on all our drawings, I don't see the Beaver Creek. Have we got a drawing which will show the Beaver Creek laid over the site plan?
Yeah, I can show you the general outline if you go to, now, I believe it's, this is a private property, so I was not able to enter the property itself and look for it, so I do note that. And it shows up on the topography. If you go to the actual aerial photograph, you can kind of see the outline of it.
You want the aerial up there?
And the applicant's engineer is here as well, and he might be able to better answer the existing condition of the creek. It follows this line, if you can kind of see the existing line, it kind of runs through here.
Oh, I see.
Kind of natural line there. And it shows up on the city's topography GIS as well.
Is that an open creek or is it enclosed in the drainage system?
My understanding is closed at that point. You don't know.
So if we were able to convince the developer perhaps to include as part of the plan the Beaver Creek, you'd have to open up that drain then and make some improvements to it?
Well, I will note that this entire, basically as Brett had shown earlier, this area is all wetland.
Yes, I'm sorry.
It's all wetland. It's just, there's two-point-eight acres of unregulated wetlands on this site. When I say unregulated, unregulated by the state.
Does it look like there's a creek there or is it just sort of a little swampy area?
Again, it's private property, I can't go on the site. I can just do what I can do from aerial photography. It looks like there is, you can tell by the, you can see that in the earlier aerial I showed you, there was a natural line shown in the aerial. Now whether it's above ground or below ground, I don't know at this point.
Okay, thank you. Most of those creeks are above ground, at least the ones in our aerial section, but they actually went in and graded them, made it more passable, allowed greater development. Anyone else? Mr. Appahidian?
Mr. Carlisle, I have a question. Considering this is unregulated, does that mean that there is no wetland mitigation requirements in terms of restoring wetland in any other part of the property?
Detroit does not have a local wetland ordinance to offset if the state does not regulate, if you don't have a local ordinance to regulate ourselves.
Any other questions for the consultant? If not, the applicant present, would you like to come forward and state your name, please?
Nathan Robinson with Horizon Engineering. On behalf of the applicant, Mondrian Properties, who is also present tonight, I'll just touch base on some of the natural features that have been discussed. Let's start with the Beaver Creek. It doesn't exist as of about forty years ago. It did, and I'm surprised there's even any indication on the aerial with the coloration. I don't know what actually that represents, maybe there's a certain tree canopy, but that is approximately where the creek used to be. But back in the nineteen-seventies, the county put in a twelve-foot diameter storm sewer called the Henry Graham Drain that runs along our western property line, north to south, and it crosses Waddles and continues in a direction where I believe it intersects with the Shanahan Drain about a half-mile south of Waddles. That drain, this is in the early seventies, that drain essentially partially enclosed the Beaver Creek, but it also cut off the headwaters of the creek. In addition to that, about a decade later, in the early eighties, the county put in another county drain called the Moxley Drain that runs east-west on the south side of Waddles. It's a smaller diameter pipe on the order of two-and-a-half feet to five-foot diameter. But as a part of that project, there were a couple twin, a couple large twin culverts for the Beaver Creek that crossed near Waddles. Those culverts were removed as a part of that project, and essentially the new enclosure went through. So the, you know, between thirty and forty years ago, the function of that creek basically went away. Now, how and when that drain onsite, it essentially got filled, and who did it and when? No idea. We don't know the history, but it's not there. The topography doesn't show that. My surveyors were onsite. Had there been any type of ditch even, they would have picked it up. If you look closely at the topography, they did pick up some very shallow swales, basically some, you know, means for some of the homeowners to try and drain their property by getting some of the drainage out to the ditch and Waddles. But these are very shallow swales. We're talking on the order of six inches. So should there be, and my guys were kind enough to locate those swales. So if there was any type of a drain or a ditch for the Beaver Creek, they surely would have located that. Also, if you follow the aerial and the old path of the Beaver Creek, it's evident that it would have run right through some existing residences as well that are to the east and to the south of our property, as well as where it crossed Waddles. There's homes on the other side of Waddles now where that creek used to be. So that's the summary on the Beaver Creek. The floodplain, it is a five-hundred-year floodplain. It's not regulated in any way. It's basically there for informational purposes. There's no permits or approvals of any kind required from the city or the state or the county to do work in the five-hundred-year floodplain. It's just there that pay this might flood once in five hundred years. So it really doesn't mean anything, especially considering that once this property is developed in general because of the spoils that are generated from utility excavations and basement excavations, the homes aren't, they're not going to be built that grade, they're going to be raised up. So even as much as a foot of raising the grade, whatever elevation that five-hundred-year floodplain is, it would essentially be eliminated anyways by default. We have developed in the five-hundred-year floodplain before, and it's, you just do it, basically. The, what was the, oh, as far as the woodlands are concerned, obviously there's a tree canopy out there. I wouldn't, you know, the types of trees, the quality of trees is, I think, fairly subjective. If you look at some of the recent aerial photos, there's a lot of deadfall out there, and my surveyors saw that as well.
I'm sorry, a lot of what?
A lot of deadfall out there. There's a lot of dead trees laying all over the place out there. I don't know what kind of trees there are. I think there's a lot of ash trees that have died over the years. Probably explains why there's a lot of dead trees. But, you know, it kind of questions the longevity of these trees. How long are they going to last? The wetlands that are out there, you know, you have to realize that there's several different components in what defines a wetland. And I'm not a wetlands expert, but you've got the soil types that are out there, whether they're hydric soils or not. You have vegetation, and obviously you have standing water. There's no standing water out there. I mean, on occasion, in wet seasons, heavy rainfalls, the property is very flat, so you are going to get a little bit of local ponding. But when my surveyors were out there, they weren't walking through water, so there's no ponds or swamps, or it's not mushy. The, you know, again, I'm not an expert, but most likely, we're required to provide a wetlands assessment on any development we do in the city of Troy. So by default, we had sent a wetlands consultant out there. So he identified these areas, and, you know, based on those factors, probably did a little soil test, looked at the county soil maps to see what types of soils are in the area, and then also looked at the vegetation, topography, you know, all the different aspects. The DQs indicated in their letter it's unregulated because it's not contiguous to a water body. That also goes back to the Beaver Creek not being there. If the creek was there, it might be a different story, but it's not. And kind of touched on all the natural features. I think as far as the tree preservation is concerned, just the nature of the development with putting in the infrastructure, the streets, the utilities, the home sites, you know, and then this is R1C, so we're not talking estate-sized lots here. They're small lots, you know, on scale of things. So the majority of the property is going to be developed with the infrastructure, plus again, we're not building these homes that grade. We're most likely going to raise them up, so you have fill activities occurring around the homes. Most of the trees are going to have to come down to facilitate the development. Now, there are some trees around the perimeter that are being preserved, but that's really the only spot that we feel that we could save those trees.
What percent of the trees are you saving?
It's a very small percentage.
It's very small.
I think it was in the, I think it was in the report that ninety-eight percent of the trees are being removed. I didn't verify that calculation myself, but, you know, if you look.
Ninety-eight percent based on my calculation.
And it's intuitive if you look at the tree survey, majority of the trees are in that central region. There are some trees around the perimeter, but majority are in that central area that that's where the development's occurring.
Any other questions for the developer? Mr. Krant?
I've been looking, you supplied one type of elevation. Are there other types of elevations going to be in this development?
Yeah, we have, that was just one set of plans we said, and we have two different floor plans and twelve different elevations. We mix it up.
I'd like to see a variety. I just don't want to see another rubber-stamped subdivision or, in this case, a condominium site.
Are any of them first-floor masters or?
We do have option for first-floor models and split levels, but those are on demand as people want.
Ranches? Any ranches?
Yes.
Mr. Stubb?
Just for interest sake, we, Mr. Maniachi knows this, we actually have a requirement that there's variation in front facades, so it's not, they're not all the same. We don't require that applicants provide all of the different options. We provide, require they provide one so the planning commission has a, kind of gets a flavor of what's proposed, but we're not going to get the cookie, your concern about being a cookie cutter is correct. We don't allow that.
Any other questions? Mr. Strat?
Yeah, it appears that the grade elevations were less than two feet or about two or three feet throughout the site, so it's relatively flat. So you had an option of putting your retention anywhere as you wanted, I would assume. Is that correct?
Not particularly. That's probably the biggest struggle I have with any type of development is the stormwater. Where you're taking it to, it's got to be an acceptable outlet, and how deep is your outlet?
Yes, I understand that.
First thing I look at, and our only acceptable outlet is the storm sewer that's either in Waddles or the twelve-foot diameter storm sewer all the way up to the world, along our western property line.
I see.
There's different things that play with each of those options, whether you're dealing with the city, the county, or both, as well as other utility processes. We've got water mains, gas mains.
Well, that being said, the thing that I really am strong on is stormwater management and creating some bio-swales and creating some interest, including a retention pond. That seems to be the entry point, and it seems like it could have been really a feature or could be a feature rather than just a typical retention pond with a one-in-ten slope or whatever, one-in-three slope. You know, the thing that bothers me is we're not really taking advantage of the natural topography as far as the retention, creating a, either through boulders or something of that nature. You can do an awful lot with that retention area. I really, that's the thing that bothers me on this, is, you know, I like to see some stormwater management.
And a note from another subdivision that we tried to put a fountain retention pond that's had standing water in it as a feature for the entrance of the subdivision, we had a hard time with your water department because they're the ones who maintain the retention ponds, and they won't allow for a wet pond anymore. And they insisted, and we ended up having to put a pump station in in their place.
I'm not necessarily advocating that we, you know, promote wet ponds necessarily, but there's all kinds of other features that you can create, I would think, through the stone walls, you know, and creating some, not necessarily stone walls, you can have some outcropping. You could have some really interesting landscape features, especially lighting that up at night or whatever. Could be really a real focal point to your entry. I mean, to me, I think it would be to your advantage. That's it.
Mr. Evans?
I was just curious, on the added roads, what provisions to the north, would you provide for vehicles turning around?
Hammerhead turnarounds? We would have, yeah, that's my initial thought is that, what we've done in the past, and I, I know we've done hammerhead turnarounds in Troy before, but I know in other places what we've done where we expect the creek to be extended, is the driveways, the last homes there, the stuff streets, the approaches would be, whatever the part of the property requires, so that essentially driveways be used as part of the T-turnaround. As part of the building permit review process, they'd work with the fire department to ensure that the last two units on that northern property line, the driveways aligned, have a T-turnaround that will allow for temporary T-turnaround until the northern road extended.
Would it, shouldn't that be shown on the plans?
They do show, they do show a, you know, preliminary driveway locations, and that would just have to be confirmed through with the fire department through, at the final engineering stage.
So it's generally what you do?
Yeah. If there's a highly likely chance that the road will be extended in the future, the fire department and engineering does allow a temporary T-turnaround such as shown, as the applicant showed me, yes.
Is it likely that the property will be developed to the north? Considering all the wetlands and all the issues with the water?
There, wait, we do think there's a chance it would be, it would be developed to the Furthermore, there's a road, it's just shown, there's a, there's a road that stops here as well, and so there's a, there'd be a natural connection in the future, was to the north to connect to that road. Oh, it's right there. Bankly. So what, I don't know, it would be right around here, and they would just extend it and make sure it connects to Bankly as well.
Bankly.
Bankly. Sorry.
Any other comments from the commissioners?
I'm again, oh, yes, Ms. Cruz, I'm sorry. Mr. Carlisle, I'm just curious, you mentioned when you gave your report earlier that you had not had the opportunity to review the site because it was private property, and I'm guessing then you didn't have permission to enter that private property. What do you need to have? I mean, what kind of permission? Who do you get that from? I'm sitting here thinking to myself, how is it helpful to me as a commissioner when the person I'm relying on to provide me with a report can't gain access to a site that we're considering allowing development?
I mean, I, I go out and look at a hundred percent of sites that I review. Ninety-five percent of them, I can, I can gain enough information because either they're commercial, and so I can go to them, or I can, I give you enough from the sidewalk.
Okay.
This one unfortunately, part of private property to weather, even if I went out there, I'm not sure I could see much because of the snow cover. I didn't feel like I, I'm sure if I would've reached out to the applicant, I'm sure they probably would let me get onsite.
Okay, so this isn't.
I didn't feel it was necessary at this point.
Okay, so this isn't like an obstacle for you?
No, no.
This was just a judgment call then that you made in this, okay. I just want to make sure you don't have obstacles.
I haven't, no, we, Brett and I can gain access when we need to.
Okay.
Joe, I'm speaking for Joe. If I called him up and said, hey, I'm going to walk the site, he'd say, have that. I'm probably, I'm guessing the day that he and I were going to walk, it was probably like fifteen below zero, so, you know, that was another deterrent to really clutching into the.
I understand that, yes.
As a follow-up to that, I just want to say, I don't know how many of you actually visited this site. I found it difficult to even get off the road there. It was extremely, you know, muddy, and I, I was, you know, you can't actually get, gain access unless you've got hip boots on, you know, so.
Well, city could provide a snowmobile for him, couldn't it?
Mr. Evans?
Yes, Mr. Pluzzi.
When I was on the Board of Zoning Appeals, that question was raised, and we solved that by putting in the application for, of areas, that the applicant was getting permission to the board and the staff to go on that property and take a look. And if we don't have that in our site plan application, maybe it's a real easy cure to do and take care of this problem about trespass.
Well, I was under the impression that we all had access to these properties unannounced. We could go out and visit them.
I got kicked off once. I didn't have the, my card with me or the photograph, but now we do have ID.
Right.
For that reason. And that was.
It's a lot of age to even talk to the owner, you know, that type of thing, so. Anything else? Well, again, I'm, I'm really disappointed that you have not even made any effort to look at a cluster option, which you gain a bonus, and we understand it's voluntary, but did your architect do anything about that? Mr. Mondrian? Mr.?
Maniachi.
Maniachi, excuse me, yeah, right.
No, we did not. The site needs the novel planning commission's ordinances, so we went with what's acceptable.
I know there are certain sort of development options that are available, like the cross lane and the open space, but if I recall what the specifics are, but I know that each option also has certain parameters you need to meet, like overall size of property, you know. I think open space parts fifty percent of preservation and that nature. And so some of the things that we run into is that even though we may think about some of the development options, sometimes it's just not possible because of what we have in terms of property size. Specifically on this one, the answer to that, I don't remember. I can remember reviewing the section, I just don't remember specifically what prevented us from doing that, but we know that in the early stages of doing feasibility analysis and whatnot, it wasn't going to work out, so we're going to consider that option.
Any other questions for the developers?
So if I could just clarify, so what I'm hearing you say then, in spite of Mr. Carlisle's recommendation that you reconsider your stormwater management, and in spite of the recommendation that you try to preserve some of the natural trees already and
that you try to preserve some of the natural trees already in existence, you've come to the conclusion that you have no other option but to do a mass clearing and build a rectangular detention pond at the entrance into the development?
For this type of, yes.
No other option, that's it?
There are options as, as, as introducing different stormwater techniques, but again, one of the things that I struggle with is, you know, boring engineering aspects of it is hydraulics, getting the water to go from point A to point B, and then meet the city and or the county departments for volumes of water that we're storing. And I'm not saying that you can't achieve that with some of the other stormwater, you know, management techniques, but there are so many different variables, the solar conditions that are out there, annoying maintenance of some of these things, as Joe mentioned, as far as the city's own DPW. I've had these discussions with engineering department as far as putting in walls and certain landscaping and whenever we try to do anything outside of your normal detention basin, I always gotta review with engineering. When an engineer says to review that with DPW, because these areas that are labeled as your stormwater detention or restoring a volume, they are going to be feeded to the city. So the county may not have no control over it, but everything else has been done. City is going to own the property, they're gonna maintain it, and the DPW, they wanna get in there and cut the grass, even something as simple as a wall, boulders or, you know, like a stacked block or something. You still have to have somebody running down there with a, with a hedger, or excuse me, a trimmer. Are they willing to do that? So anything outside of the whole framework basically to do with the DPW, some type of immediate resistance to that end, so. Yeah, there are alternatives, but for what we're trying to achieve with this development, this was our best option, and the option that we decided to, you know, we don't, you know, go into these. There was, there was, there was a lot of work put into, I mean, I know it, it, you know, we see current, you know, straight through the streets in here, but how many months did we work on this with different sketches and lot sizes and configurations, trying to come up with alternatives and meet all the city's requirements?
Will you put a chain link fence around your rectangular detention pond at the entrance into your development?
Against the city ordinances, now they don't want that.
Mr. Stratt, did you have a comment?
Yeah, obviously, Joe, I'm very appreciative of the fact that you're trying to maximize, you know, but to lose one or two, you could come up with some, or it could be done. He's got a golden tongue, but, you know, really, you, you can in fact come up with some better feature. Obviously, it's to the sacrifice of one or two units, so unfortunately, that's what we're looking for, you know?
And I can appreciate that, and I understand what the planning commission's looking for.
Yeah.
But it does become a bigger struggle after we leave here and in the engineering department and the rest of the city review departments.
Yeah, no, I understand that, I appreciate that.
So the bottom line, it's the city's problem, it's not the developer's problem? Is that what we take away from this? I, I have, I find it hard to approve a site plan development like this. And even with the developer saying, you know, we can't do anything because the city's hampering us on the, on the, on the stormwater stuff. And no, we can't try a, a cluster option because it's too much effort. That's what I, that's the way I interpret this, so. Unless someone else, is the city the problem?
I think, I think that this, the city engineering department is willing to work with developers on creative ways to, to, to come up with solutions and to address and to try to achieve best management practices, generally speaking. Now, there's, there, I believe, what Mr. Robinson indicated regarding, you know, some situations where there's, there's plantings and there's, you, there's, you know, the tradi- the traditional way that, as an example, for detention basins, one on six slope, no fence, you know, the, the traditional way to, to, to design those with turf grass, you go with, you cut them once a month, easy peasy. When you start getting into more creative solutions with native species and whatnot, you can't do that. You have to, you have to selectively weed and you have to, you know, there's, there's, it takes more than just you're sending a, a con- you have to educate your contractor, make sure they're educated. So there's a little bit more heavy lifting, but I, I, I'm not comfortable throwing our engineering department on the bus because I think they, they will work with, with applicants and developers and engineers and designers to come up with, with solutions for, for problems.
So the, so the city is not willing to take over the maintenance of a detention pond that has creative solutions?
No, I don't think that's accurate.
That's not the message we're hearing.
I don't think that's accurate because we've got a lot of level that's, we've got a city-owned and city-maintained detention basin on a level that is a, is a bios, it's a large bioswale that's full of native plant species. So, I mean, I, I think it's, there's probably some, you know, it's a case by case, I can't speak for them. I'm, I'm, this isn't my, my area of expertise, but, you know, there would, there would have to be some dialogue and some, we'd have to work with the DPW department because ultimately they're, they're gonna be the ones maintaining it. That's-
That's true.
They already have them in the city right now.
We've got at least one that I know of, yes, a level.
Mr. Krent?
Just wanted to bounce off again the native species for something like this. If it's just grass, it's gonna be something the city will have to maintain. If they put in native plants and species indigenous to our area that, that do find its home in lower, um, ditches or et cetera, I would think the maintenance would be less.
Just to piggyback on what Mr. Krent said, so, so what I, what I was referring to is a detention basin, but if there's, there's other means, there's other ways to, to, for example, stormwater detention, there's other ways to address that with, with backyard bioswales and rain gardens and things like that, 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 um, just sitting here thinking about it, wouldn't necessarily have to be a detention basin per se and owned by the city. It could be, it could be on private property or it could be perhaps in a-
Common area.
In a common area that the whole, that the whole neighborhood is responsible for maintaining. I, I, you know, that's a creative solution, that, that, some of that would be on the, on the homeowner association to maintain moving forward, that's possible too.
Mr. Stratt?
Piggybacking onto that, especially if it has night lighting and it has other kinds of features, that could be enhancing the value of all those homes along there as well.
I think there's, I think there's not, there's not one answer for, you know, there's, there's all kinds of different solutions and all kinds of different possibilities, I would say, and one size does not fit all.
Anyone else? Mr. Krent?
Another comment, on the architecture, I wanted to direct this to the developer. You mentioned you're gonna have some ranch-style homes and some first floor. How many, what's the, what's the ratio, what's the kind of-
We have them in our portfolio and they're on a case-by-case basis. If someone comes in and wants to buy a ranch, we will have one built for them.
So you don't have a specific layout right now, it depends on the buyer of the home? Okay, thanks.
Consider.
Okay, if there are no more questions, we'll bring you back to the table. Is there anyone who wants to move the proposed resolution? And if not, I think we need a, a resolution to, some other resolution to replace that. And what, willing to make a resolution? What do we do, Mr. Chairman?
You're the chairman.
I can move a resolution, but I don't know where it's gonna, where it's gonna go. But I would just move it as the postponed until such time as stormwater management options have been fully explored, as well as perhaps the cluster option with a bonus in density, so. I will move that.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, did you get that?
Uh, postponed, uh-
Plus the cluster option is-
To provide the, the applicant an opportunity?
Yes.
To explore design options?
Yes, the layout or development, what do you call that, is that?
Related, related to stormwater intention?
Right, as well as exploring the cluster option. Let's have a discussion of the motion, please. Mr. Krent?
You know, I, I realize we're filling in tiny parcels in Troy. We don't have these big expansive places to develop in. They're trying to maximize, obviously economically, out of that dirt, you know, the best they can. And engineering-wise, economically, I think this is well done. But it just comes off to me as any development in any place that you wouldn't wanna, necessarily wanna live. In other words, it's, it's so mundane, it's so average, it's so boring. I, I'm looking for something in Troy that, when people come to Troy and look for a home in Troy because it's, it's exceptional, we're an exceptional city in many respects, not just our housing. And it just looks, even though there are some different elevations, different, two different floor plans available, it reminds me of the nineteen-sixties-type subdivisions, which I just kinda cringe at, but that's my opinion.
Anyone else? Mr. Stratt?
Well, you really can't fault the developer for trying to actually maximize the area, though, I mean-
I totally understand that part.
I have mixed emotions, but I, I really think that there's something more that could be done. I agree with you, especially with the retention, you know, but that's just my opinion. I, I'm not sure, I can appreciate where the developer's coming from as well.
I can too, and again, like I said, engineering-wise, economic-wise, it's well done.
Right.
Mr. Cooper?
I'd like to see something in the resolution that also addresses the trees and preserving the trees. I'm concerned ninety-eight percent of them are being designated, so.
That's a good point. The cluster option does hopefully provide for that type of layout where you could have-
Putting cases.
Yeah, right, right, I know, that's a fair, Mr. Apahidian?
I, I think that we would like to see more creativity brought to the table by the developer in terms of water management and also, as you mentioned, with tree preservation. But I think we've had this discussion in the past that without a tree preservation ordinance, we could have that included in the resolution, but it really won't gain any traction. It, it'll remain more as a preference. And my, my question is, my dilemma is that if we actually approve this all, this modified resolution, how will that in any way be more enforceable than it is today for the developer? If the developer actually has the options and the flexibility to implement whatever optimized design he wishes and the optimized design that he preferred was already presented to us, how will that be any different in the future in terms of us enforcing a different design onto the developer? That's kind of my dilemma at this point, that he's trying to optimize and work with the flexibility that he's been given in certain parameters of the ordinance and we're trying to impose something that's more ideal for us or different creativity, but how do we, how do we deal with that in the future?
Well, a tree preservation ordinance has certainly been a controversial issue in the past, you know, for us, those of us who've been around here for a long time. Unfortunately, the, the proposal really, in my estimation, got totally out of hand and even controlled where, where you could on your own property place a tree or, or that type of thing. It was, you know, very controversial and very divisive. I think there are opportunities to make up a new ordinance that concentrates much less restrictively on homeowners. Mr. Stratt, what's happening?
I guess the way, to, to answer your question, the way I would, the way I would answer the question would be that one of the responsibilities of the planning commission is to ensure that health, public health, safety and welfare. And the planning commission as, as a body has, has indicated that they believe that there's, there's a design improvements that could be made to this proposal that could improve the design of this, of this development and its impact on, on neighboring properties. So, then there's been numerous, there's been a lot of discussion and numerous points raised. So this, what the planning commission is doing is they're providing the applicant with an opportunity to consider the comments, to go back to the drawing board, have a discussion with the engineer, talk about this, and maybe there's some elements that we've discussed this evening that could be forwarded in a revised plan moving forward that, that could, could improve the, the design, that's the hope.
This is, I, I totally agree with you, but this is not really a small site, isn't it eight acres? Sorry to go.
Eight point eight acres, eight point eight.
It's a fairly substantial-sized site. Mr. Hudson, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm not crazy about the design either, but we've got a developer who is willing to wager hundreds of thousand dollars on this parcel. It meets all the requirements under the code and I, I can't vote for this resolution because I think he's entitled to site plan approval.
Anyone else? Uh, can we have a roll call vote, Mr.?
Just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, the motion was made by Mr. Edmonds and seconded by Mr. Krent, I believe?
Yes.
Okay, so this is on the vote for postponement?
Right.
Okay. Mr. Hudson?
No.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Senzika?
Yes.
Mr. Stratt?
Yes.
Mr. Apahidian?
No.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Six, six yes votes.
Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is DVA report, or no, I'm sorry, ZDA report.
It's, um, public comment.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry, yes, respect.
You're on, Bill.
There was no ZDA reported last week.
No, it wasn't ZDA, it's, it's, uh-
You got, if you got the, this, here's the, uh-
I think I'm the only, where's current agenda?
Public comment.
Yeah, any other public comment for items now on the current agenda? Seeing that one, we'll go to planning commission comment, and let's begin with Mr. Senzika tonight.
Well, the last site thing was very difficult, I, 'cause I could see most sites in the story. Being in the position of the developer, you know, like, they wanna maximize their profit and, but obviously, we, we like to provide them with some opportunities to show us what could be done. And I, I can understand why it'd be quite a dilemma for the developer if he has a very economical and potentially profitable development and come up with an alternative design. But I think that this board is, 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 is looking for other alternatives and I think, I think we have high standards and I think we should, and we have the right to demand that. So I, it'd be interesting to see what he can come up with and I encourage him to look at other options and if there's ways of developing the property using more best management practices, I really encourage him.
Mr. Hudson?
Bill Kelly.
Mr. Krent?
I just wanted to kind of reiterate what I said earlier, I think, but I think we should have an exceptional-looking city, not just exceptional people in our city. And to do that, I think when we, when we review the, our ordinances coming up, maybe we should focus on, on the aesthetics of, you know, put this in, some, some teeth into what we're saying here as opposed to, well, met all the requirements, well, we should have more flexibility than what our ordinance allows for more creativity.
Ms. Cooper?
I understand that, that square mile of, of land is where you can afford to buy houses that are more, more affordable, I guess. So I understand the need to stay-
So I understand the need to stay economical in the design, but I think that we, um, by postponing, maybe we have this opportunity to, to have something a little bit more in line with what we want as a city.
Mr. Apahidian?
I think the developer meeting the requirements of the development had a optimized design, but, you know, personally, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing what other options they can bring to the table in terms of, um, changing the site stormwater management that is, at the same time, optimized but as well accepted by the city in terms of long-term maintenance. I think some, you know, improvements can be made, and I'm looking forward to that as well.
Ms. Cruz?
Um, you know, tonight, tonight was a difficult vote. I think for a lot of us, I think we, we wanna welcome developers to our city. We wanna encourage development in the city. I also think we have sort of a vision that we've been working on as a body as to what we want our city to, to look like. And I know exactly where this property is, I've driven past it, you know, a hundred times, and I think it's great that someone wants to develop it and, and put something there, but at the same time, as, as developers come to our city and begin to work with our city government, you know, I'd like, I'd like to feel as a planning commissioner, um, that the developer respects Mother Earth at some level, that there is some respect for the topography, the, the trees, the stormwater management, the ways in which we can use the best practices to, to create not only a beautiful subdivision, but one that is as environmentally friendly as it can be. And then my final comment is, um, you know, in my question to Mr. Carlisle concerning his review of the property, I just wanna be clear that my intent was in no way to criticize Mr. Carlisle's decision, but to just make sure myself as a commissioner that he has given every opportunity that he needs to do his job.
Mr. Strat?
No comment.
The comment I wanna make is, as Mr. Sabatina indicated, a postponement is perfectly proper for the planning commission if they really want the developer to explore options that are in the interest of public health, safety and welfare. However, the, what Mr. Hudson and Mr. Apahidian also made, at some point, if you're gonna deny the site plan, you have to be able to point to a specific ordinance or statute that's not complied with. And if you can't do that, then basically you're gonna have to ultimately approve the site plan, so.
That's no comment.
Thank you. Mr. Carlisle?
No comment.
Mr. Sabatina? And I have no comment either, so, um, if there's no further questions, we are adjourned.